Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a Canton City Council, regular council meeting, December the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And if you would, please stand and join me in the pleasurable evening, so we remain standing for the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here and those that could not attend. We ask that you be with them and their families. We ask that you be with us as we continue to discuss the business of our city. And we pray that the unrest in our world will cease during this Christmas season. And we know that you are the reason for this season. All these things we pray. Amen.
As well, everyone here tonight, first time on, will entertain a motion to approve our agenda. And a motion, we have a second.
Avoid Bill Grant first, number D, will be the first one, and E, it runs from the afternoon, and then move C, intergovernmental agreement, as we see.
Okay, back up. You want A to be what? Which one?
I want it to be, uh, Bill Grant first, and C will be Dennis Burnett second.
Okay. Just reverse those two?
Yes, just, yeah, put him, put, uh, Bill first, and then Dennis second, and then, uh, C, keep C the same. Bill can't vote for himself, so we'll get that one out of the way, and then he can vote for Dennis.
Okay, so what you're asking is that we reverse?
I want Bill to be first, A, Dennis Burnett to be B second.
Oh, you mean move them all the way to the top?
Yes.
Okay.
Just in case.
That's it. Okay, we got A is going to be nomination of Councilman Grant, CID. B will be nomination Dennis Burnett. Uh, C then will start at the top with acceptance of Great Sky Streets, D, soft open in Federal Park, and E, action on whether to pursue an intergovernmental agreement.
Well, I guess, I really wanted the third one to be the action for pursuing an intergovernmental agreement. And move that ahead of the streets, honestly, could we do it? Because the longest one might be the fire. We're just trying to show it to the public.
Okay. So you want, you want to make the item C?
C and C.
And B?
B, B.
C and then A will be D, and B will be E. Man, alive. Somebody'll step me out when we get to those, okay? Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All who oppose, nope, all who vote for the motion. All right, you have in your agenda package the minutes from December the fourth, council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, all there can be motion to approve.
Thomas, Matthew Thomas, is it?
Matthew Thomas.
What is that, on the second page there?
Called to order, under called to order, third from the bottom.
Oh, up here, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you know how to spell it correctly?
TM, CO, AM.
Oh, I see.
That's fair, I spelled that wrong.
Yeah, just kidding. All right, uh, with that correction, any other corrections that need to be made? If not, does it favor approving those minutes, signify by saying aye. All who oppose, nope, all members vote for the motion.
For the second.
Okay. Okay, does it favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Same vote, six oh. All right, ten minute public input. We have one member, Mr. Jim Ducey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, stand. Mr. Kemp, Mr. Dyer. Last week, I sent the chairman of the Fire Services Committee an email, and I hadn't heard a response. So I'm here tonight to actually ask for a response, if necessary. If you didn't receive the email, please tell me, and I'll go ahead and read it. Is that, you received it?
Yes.
It's not worthy of a response?
Actually, this is, this period is not a question-answer period, I must say. It's actually a monologue in which you're welcome to make the comments you like, but the council is here.
Okay, my, my, yeah, I apologize for that, but I recall last meeting where the business owners from downtown had a dialogue that wasn't even on the agenda. So I thought I'd read that, excuse me. Okay, let me go ahead and read it. "Mr. Grant, reference Laurel Canyon Fire Service. Since you are the Canton Fire Service Committee Chairman, I have two questions and comments, and would appreciate your response." First question, why is consolidation of the county and city fire departments not on the table with Laurel Canyon for discussion and determination? I know there have been some traffic on the internet, Canton Sixth Patch, from Mr. Grant and from you, Mr. Mayor. They still don't clear up some of the questions, um, because if we're talking about consolidation, and that is the larger consolidation where you're going to take the entire city of Canton Fire Department and give it to the county, then what is Laurel Canyon? A little consolidation? I think consolidation is consolidation. The other thing, of course, is, if we may have been misled on taxes, if it's not going to cost the city anything to do this, will it cost the Cherokee County property taxpayers anything? Because for in Canton, we still pay Cherokee County property tax. And that really hasn't been, to my understanding, been addressed. Question two, is there a representative cross-section of residents representing the various Canton wards on your fire service committee? Now, my understanding, and I don't know who's on it, but my understanding, not all the wards are represented. Now, to me, on something this critical, I would think we have one as many technical people as possible. Um, and my understanding is also that the Canton technical people, those are the ones that do the day-to-day here in Canton, from running the city and the financial side and fire services, don't want this Laurel Canyon consolidation to go through. And the county technical people do. So quite frankly, as a Canton resident, I would side with my own folks, with the Canton technical people. Now, whether this happens or not, it's going to be up to y'all voting. Hopefully, it will be with wisdom, facts, and not politics. But I would ask two things. And like I say, I'm not a voting member, I'm just an ordinary resident, don't have the clout like some other folks, okay? The resident, the place I live, we have quite a few seniors. We also have one entranceway. And it is difficult, if not impossible, to get out during the winter because of the hill. So while we're not as bad as Laurel Canyon, we still have some problems. And I think any changes to this need to be addressed, and like I said, I would go with the folks from the city, technical people from the city, and use their knowledge. And let me add just one thing. Y'all had this two-year take-back. Now, just go back two weeks ago, to the last council meeting, what if you had a two-year take-back on that part? You wouldn't be able to do anything about it until twenty sixteen, maybe twenty seventeen. So if, in your infinite wisdom, you decide to do this, I would ask that you have a probationary period, six months before you go into these two-year cycles of taking it back. So I wish I would have received a response from you. It would have precluded me having to get up here and do this. Uh, and you need to tell me either after this meeting, or at any point, if you don't want me emailing you or anybody else on the commission, on the city council. Because I feel if I take the time to do this, I should get a response.
Thank you. Okay. Under the consent agenda, on your agenda there, there's items A through E. I will read these. And if there's any of them that you wish to pull off for further discussion, we will do that. Item A, approval of resolution to adopt the annual update to the capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan for the impact fee program. Item B, approval of lease with Canton Textile Bills for the storage of snow removal materials. Item C, second reading and approval of request for beer and wine alcohol license by Aldi, Inc., five fifty-three Riverstone Parkway, manager, Thomas Rents. Item D, approval of nomination of Ann Fenter as member of Canton Tree Commission. And item E, approval of list of potential part-time solicitors, which you, uh, I know we had it in our last, last, uh, package, so you saw all those. Uh, do I have a, a motion? Do we want to approve? Motion to approve, we have a second. Okay, any other discussion? If not, does it favor signify by saying aye? All who oppose, nope, all members vote for the motion. Okay, under old business, item A, the action on the nomination Councilman Grant as member of Canton Marketplace Community Improvement District. Uh, the city has a, a council member appointee nominated by the mayor, subject to approval by the council, and a citizen member. And this is the council member, uh, and I am nominating Councilman Grant to serve at that capacity.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, or I have a second. Okay, actually, I think my nomination is a motion, but that's okay under these circumstances. Uh, I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, does it favor signify by saying aye? All who oppose, nope, all members vote for the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, with the exception of Mr. Grant. And the next item is a, nominating Dennis Burnett as a member of the Canton Marketplace CID as a citizen member. Uh, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second to the motion. Any other discussion? If not, does it favor signify by saying aye? All who oppose, nope, all members vote for the motion. Thank you.
Did we have any abstain? Everybody voted no.
Okay, the, uh, next item C now is the action on decision on whether to pursue an intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County regarding the operation of the Canton Fire Station. The, the purpose of this vote is to decide whether or not we would ask our Fire Services Committee and the staff of the city to work with the county in order to develop an intergovernmental agreement, which would actually, uh, basically comply or be consistent with the, uh, in general terms, the memorandum of understanding that we have been dealing with. So I believe, Mr. Grant, this is your, your item.
Yes. I move that we have the Fire Services Committee and the city staff work with the county, county to develop the final intergovernmental agreement for the city to design and construct the Northwest Canton Fire Station, and the county to provide the personnel, equipment, and operate the station. Final agreement would be presented to the full council for approval or denial at our council meeting on January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
Would you mind reading again this?
Yes. I move that we have the Fire Services Committee and city staff work with the county to develop a final intergovernmental agreement for the city to design and construct the Northwest Canton Fire Station, and the county to provide the personnel, equipment, and operate the station. Final agreement would be presented to the full council for approval or denial at our council meeting on January twenty-second.
Do I have a second? Do I have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Russ?
I just have something I'd like to read. Um, having attended almost every Canton Fire Services meeting over the past six years, I'm struck by the changes in our direction. We first considered talking with the county several years ago. They offered to build two fire stations immediately if we would consolidate with them. I can't tell you how many times I heard that they were going to build, they had two million dollars, they were going to build those two stations. Next, we voted down an eight million dollar bond issue, that was to build fire stations in a training facility. We continued to talk about consolidation somewhat separately. Finally, we agreed to a meeting and immediately agreed not to talk about full consolidation again. The only thing left on the table to discuss is who will staff the new Laurel Canyon Fire Station. The city of Canton is building a new Laurel Canyon Fire Station now. In July, it will be staffed and operational. The county has offered to enter into a fifty-year intergovernmental agreement to staff the facility with a two-year cancellation cost. The county's proposal will not save the city any substantial money, since under their proposal, we have to hire the same number of new firefighters as will be required to staff the new station. I wish I could predict what our fire services need would be in fifty years. Building materials will undoubtedly be more fire-resistant. Homes will undoubtedly be, have fire suppression built into their homes. EMS departments will undoubtedly have extremely rapid fire, uh, rapid life monitoring and emergency life-saving delivery methods. Fire departments will undoubtedly be faster and probably airborne. The first responders in the future may be drones. I know they're already being used. Canton will undoubtedly be a bigger city. In two thousand, we had seven thousand residents. There are almost twenty-five thousand residents today. Fifty to a hundred thousand or more Canton residents in fifty years is very likely. The Laurel Canyon Station will probably still be standing. It's difficult to imagine our city with one Canton Fire Station manned by the county, surrounded by four to five City of Canton-owned and operated, operated fire stations. Cherokee County staffing Laurel Canyon is not a short-term, cost-saving, uh, solution. And longer term, this island of county staffing our fire station within the city of Canton is a very poor idea. Our priorities should be where they are. Build it, staff it, and start planning for the new Canton Marketplace Station. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. Anyone else?
I, you know, I have to say something, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you did. Of course, I would agree with, um, Mr. Russ's comments. But, uh, the past week or so, I've gotten quite a few emails, and as I walk the streets and visit around town, had quite a few conversations in. I get mixed reviews. There are people who want to go over with the county, and likely, just like that, there are people on the other side. So that's kind of a toss-up right there. The one thing that comes out very clear to me, uh, about both sides, is how much lack of knowledge about this issue. There's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of no information. I sat through, with that said, I sat through the one and only Fire Services meeting, uh, where, uh, Mr. Goodwin was absent. And we had two new council people, along with our fire chief, sitting on that committee, but I think the fire chief was a guest. Once again, I would say the comment I made earlier, I was surprised how much information is not known. In that meeting, we talked about how much it's going to cost to cut the grass. Who's going to pay the insurance? And these type of issues, and just like Mr. Russ says, this is going to impact our city for years to come. And it will come fairly quickly, just because we're going to have a similar situation arise out at Marketplace. We've got the property right down the road, underneath the forestry tower on, on State Highway twenty. The county has a property where they want to build a fire station. I would guess that they're less than two miles apart. That's just a guess. So we're going to have a similar situation here. So if we take away that, take away up here in Laurel Canyon, and down, and then go over to uh, the other one at, at, uh, the Marketplace, uh, you're basically taking away the, the Canton Fire Department. Some people on this, uh, sitting up here, recognize that. They recognize that that will happen, and it'll force the city to go to a, uh, the Canton, uh, go to the county for their fire protection. I don't want to be forced into it. It's like Mr. Russ says, we're going to grow, and we can well afford to build our own fire stations and man them. I, I think it's very, uh, short-sighted that we come in here and try to make a decision like this based on one station. I think it's poor management, uh, extremely poor management. And I guess I'll end it, end it with that said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. And I'd like to address it from the standpoint of the, the city manager. My responsibility is to see that the absolute best fire service is provided to the citizens of the city. Whether that involves a totally staffs by the city, the use of volunteers, partially staffed by the city, partially staffed by the county, the obligation is to find the best methodology. My position now is that I do not believe that the entire proposal or MOU, as it's proposed, is the best way to head and set that in concrete. Do I think there should be further discussions with the county relative to how we best proceed to serve both needs? Absolutely. But I'd like to illustrate a few things. We talked about geographical boundaries, but I think the committee is lacking facts that should be considered before we cement a particular solution in. For example, if I might, I'd like to ask Mr. Grant, do you know how many calls the city fire department made in two thousand and thirteen?
I have those numbers.
Do you?
I don't know them off the top of my head.
Do you know how many of those calls were provided by the city to the county? Do you know how many of those calls, Mr. McGrew, went into, for example, and I address it to you too, because you're the committee members that were at the meetings? Uh, do you know how many calls went into in two thousand and thirteen that went into Soleil or Laurel Canyon and Great Sky? These are all facts that need to be laid out and evaluated from an approach as to how we best serve the city. Do we know, for, for example, in that proposal, it is
Whether that involves a totally staffs by the city, the use of volunteers, partially staffed by the city, partially staffed by the county, the obligation is to find the best methodology. My position now is that I do not believe that the entire proposal or MOU, as it's proposed, is the best way to head and set that in concrete. Do I think there should be further discussions with the county relative to how we best proceed to serve both needs? Absolutely. But I'd like to illustrate a few things. We talked about geographical boundaries, but I think the committee is lacking facts that should be considered before we cement a particular solution in. For example, if I might, I'd like to ask Mr. Grant, do you know how many calls the city fire department made in 2013?
I have those numbers.
Do you?
I don't know them off the top of my head.
Do you know how many of those calls were provided by the city to the county? Do you know how many of those calls, Ms. McGrew, went into, for example, and I address it to you too, because you're committee members that were at the meetings? Do you know how many calls went into in 2013 that went into Soleil or Laurel Canyon and Great Sky? These are all facts that need to be laid out and evaluated from an approach as to how we best serve the city. Do we know, for example, in that proposal, it is required in the MOU that the city staff a ladder truck? Our fire department will tell you that is a waste of designating a RIT team to a ladder truck. And to illustrate that, we used in 2013 a ladder truck 11 times to designate nine firefighters specifically to a ladder company for, I'm sorry, 11 times, to nine firefighters for 11 incidents. Now, of those 11 incidents, four were in the county and seven were in the city. The flexibility that's required within the city does not dictate a designated ladder company. We want and need to have the flexibility of using RIT, Rapid Intervention Team, Train Personnel, on the type of equipment that's appropriate to the incident, whether that be a ladder truck, whether that be a rescue vehicle, or whether that be an engine. In addition, we don't want to have only nine firefighters designated RIT. We want to have as many of our firefighters as possible. That way, even if the Laurel Canyon Station is staffed by county personnel, leaving us with 30 personnel in the city, we have the flexibility of using those personnel to meet the requirements of the specific incident. So, proceeding to develop an agreement based on this MOU, to me, is premature. To proceed to continue to discuss an agreement that may alter certain conditions of the MOU could be very beneficial to the city. For example, if we had flexibility utilizing 39 firefighters, which this could bring to us, we would be much better off than the city just having 30 alone. There's no question that 39 firefighters in the city would give better or possibly more responsive service than 30. But I think the way the motion is worded, it is locking us into specific conditions that I feel are detrimental to providing fire services at the best level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin?
First, I'd like to kind of give you some information about what Mr. Huffman said. I did not attend the second meeting of the Fire Services Committee, and I found out at an executive session on Thursday night that my seven-year-old son was in a Thanksgiving play. And so, I mentioned it to Mr. Grant and asked if we could re-sign a time to have it, rather than next morning at 9:00 or whatever time it was, because that coincided with my meeting. The next morning, I actually sent an email requesting that, of he and Ms. McGrew. They said that we'd had plenty of time to notice, and they were going to go ahead and have the meeting. So, they did, and I was not a part of that meeting. So, I did want to let the public know I didn't just miss the meeting. In fact, I probably missed less than five meetings in seven years, and I've driven from Alabama and Florida and Tennessee to get here. But I also wanted to say that I talked to many citizens this week and through the past years. This has been brought up over and over and over again. I also talked to some previous council people. It's been brought up many times, and I have seen to get the same response from most people. They're interested that the county does want to consolidate, but they do not see the real need for it. They don't see any real savings when they actually look into it. And I've had several people looking deeply into it, some previous council people that I've talked to, and I've actually looked at it myself. So, you know, I've actually been to fires with our fire department. I've actually been there when the county was there and the city was there, and they worked great together. And I want to say, you know, great, I really appreciate the county working with us, and I would like to do some other projects with the county. But in this instance, we've got a great fire department, almost no turnover. They do a great job. They contain all of our fires. We have a good rating, and I don't see the need for this. And that's my opinion, but it's not only my opinion, it's what I seem to get from the public. So, you know, I just, I don't see any real savings here. If it was huge, you know, a million dollars worth of savings, maybe, but we're putting out a ladder truck that costs us well into millions, and we're putting out a fire ladder company, which is going to cost a lot of money too. So, I'm for saving the public money, and I don't think it's going to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Goodwin? I mean, Mr. Grant?
I'd like to just respond to a few things, starting with Councilman Huffman. We talked about our Fire Services meeting, where we talked about money and talked about saving money mowing the grass. We also talked about operational costs, and our CFO was there and talked about annual operational costs of $150,000 to $175,000 minimum. So, taking everything else aside, we would be saving that much minimum, and I'm sure more of that. So, I don't think that's an insubstantial amount of money, especially over, you know, many years. So, I think we're talking about some real money here. And for Mr. Cummings, my notion didn't include that it was based on this memorandum of understanding. It was to work out an intergovernmental agreement. So, I agree that we could maybe work out a better agreement. So, I just want to make it clear that my motion did not include an intergovernmental agreement based on the memorandum of understanding on the table now. So, it was just an intergovernmental agreement. So, and then, Mr. Goodwin, no one, I don't think, was insinuating that you missed that meeting intentionally. I don't think Mr. Huffman was doing that. And that meeting was scheduled at your request for that Friday morning, and in the Thursday executive session, you told me you weren't going to be able to make it, but you didn't ask me that night to, if we could reschedule. I didn't get that email until the next morning asking if we could reschedule it. And I was at a meeting, and I didn't read that email until about 10:30. I think our meeting was scheduled at 11:00, so it was kind of too late to schedule that. So, just want to clear those things up. And I agree with you that we have a great fire department, and I think we're all focused on delivering the best quality of services at the least possible cost to the taxpayers. And I keep hearing the term consolidation thrown out there, and this is not consolidation, this is one station, and we're talking about how to deliver the best services there. And, you know, it's an opportunity to do this joint venture in that one station. And we do, I agree with Mr. Russ, we need to start looking to the Canton Play Station, and that is coming up, and that's going to be a huge need. So, I just want to clear those things up, so. Ms. McGrew?
I just wanted to say that, getting various numbers from various people, and if we do pursue negotiations over operations and occupation of the Northwest Canton Station, you know, the numbers will become more and more firm. But let's say the operational costs are at a minimum $150,000. That's nothing to sneeze at, and we need to build a bigger, better station, not necessarily better, but a more elaborate station for the hospital area, because the needs are going to be different than what our needs are at Laurel Canyon. And I would just look forward to making those savings so that we could have more money to put into personnel, safety gear, and equipment, and a station that would be able to grow with the hospital as it needs and with the city as it needs. So, any savings is good savings in my book.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, we're throwing this $150,000 around, and I think the number that I have in actual operational savings is around $47,000. Isn't that correct, Mr. Ingram?
If I may, when we had that committee meeting, I think we threw up the $150,000, that's what we currently budget for maintenance right now, because we talked about it would be approximately half, somewhere in the 75, I do recall I mentioned 75 during the meeting. So, I don't know if there was some miscommunication, but when we've reevaluated the cost, it could be as low as 50, 50, 75,000 dollars maintenance. Obviously, those are unknown at this time.
One of the things that's overlooked, and if we look at, to further bring it out, if we look at just the station itself, you have a savings in that station, but the minute we begin to staff those same number of people on another vehicle, it's a shift of cost to another station where your maintenance costs will go up. So, it's one of the things that, I think there is savings, but we have to look at what's the bottom-line savings. It's not necessarily the savings just in one station that the city would incur, but the bottom-line savings, because we're going to increase the cost for those nine firefighters that we do add at another station. So, we have to subtract that to arrive at the net savings. And these are all things that have to be really developed as we pursue. But, Mr. Grant, if the process in which you're trying to counsel this motion, if I misunderstood that, is to continue discussions to arrive at a very fair and workable MOU that will increase the services, or an agreement with the county to increase the services to the city, I'm all in favor of providing better services. I just don't want, I just don't feel the MOU that we currently have does that.
I just wanted to say, if those numbers had changed, I think it's a responsibility of the city manager to give those numbers to us.
Beg your pardon, but I didn't give you the original numbers, so I can't, I don't know where you got them or how you had them. So, the only thing I can do is I know they were said in verbal estimate, and we refined those numbers, and they're available.
Let me, oh, yes, go ahead.
Well, first of all, the committee should have asked for those numbers.
We did.
They did, yes.
Ask for it from the city manager. You addressed the city manager just a minute ago. Thank you. I go back to saying, we're still focused on the one station, and it's going to impact the second and possibly the third station. I don't know if Mr. Cummings has shared completely with the plan that he and our chief has developed, a three-pronged plan for this city, which entails closing eventually downtown Canton, where it addresses having in a five-mile radius, which is very good, 96% of all of Canton in a five-mile radius.
Two. Two stations? Two-mile radius.
Two-mile, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. A two-mile radius, which means we can respond really quick. And we are focusing on this one station, and whether we can save 40, 50, 60, or maybe it's 175 already in this committee, we don't know what the savings is. And they are asking for moving forward, and we've gotten together as a committee, or they have gotten together a committee, and we really don't have a hard number. And we're ready to go and discuss. I'm sorry, poor management. Mr. Cummings, maybe you could enlighten us a little bit on this three-pronged approach? This is the reason we need people that have technical information in these meetings that understand. We don't need to be forcing this thing through with two new council people that really don't understand all the facts.
Whoa.
Well, I'm just going to come right out and say it.
You want to, I can.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
If I might just give a little history on this, you heard it originally from Mr. Russ about all the reiterations and discussions that we had about fire services. When I was appointed in January in the interim position of city manager, I instructed Chief Floyd to ignore completely where our fire stations currently exist or where they're planned. And I said, I want you to take a map of the city, and we naturally can't do it based on future calls, but on historical calls. I told him to take all of 2013 and put a dot on the map of every single call that we made. Based on that map, we had to make some fixed assumptions, i.e., we're not going to replace the South Fire Station, so we said that station's going to exist. There's been discussions over a long period of time of how old and our fire station building downtown is, so I left that as a potential replacement. We then went to the Laurel Canyon site and said, we have up in that area a property that can be utilized. Is it a good site? And when we put the station there, we triangulated that with where the ideal spot for a third station in order to cover 95, approximately 95% of our call volume within a two-mile radius. That is not two road miles, that is a true two-mile radius. But that, if any fire department will tell you, that is excellent coverage. And what it highlighted was the property that Northside Hospital was donating or exchanging for Impact for fee credits. I don't like to say donating, because it's really not a donation. It's a provision of land where they had initially provided it did not triangulate well, and Northside has since offered to provide a much better located station relative to the city. Recognizing at that point in time, the county had not mentioned anything but consolidation, Ms. McGrew went to the county and asked the county in a meeting if they would consider a hybrid, a hybrid relationship, and I believe Ms. McGrew was told, at least she reported that, that they were not interested in any hybrid relationships. So, we continued to pursue along that the city had to expand its fire services in this triangulated area. Naturally, if we take one leg of that stool or the one fire station out of the mix, it creates some degree of complexity of how we manage firefighters for vacations and holidays and everything like that. In discussing with the chief, our preference in working with the county to provide, again, the expanded fire services of 39 firefighters would be to switch the roles of, allow the city to manage the station and take the nine firefighters that are currently at Station Nine or whatever firefighters they wanted, and have them provide the ladder truck, because that's basically a request or requirement that the county wants. That would give us greater flexibility, give all of the initial responses within the city under one command, and then those ladder truck RIT incidents would also be under one command. We wouldn't have a mixed command situation when we had a fire that required more than one station to respond. That would have been our preference in moving forward. And I think that should be, as Mr. Grant said, basically, the whole discussion of how we work together is open, so therefore, that should be discussed in the process. But anyway, that's what we did bring us to this point. And once we broke ground on the station, which was voted by this council, the county came and said, oh, we're going to build a station at Sam Nelson. Well, that never came out before we made the decision to actually break ground. We may have never broke ground if the county had said to us, let's get together and discuss about a station that the about a station that the county would build. So a lot of this is, a lot of what has transpired has transpired after we've made very specific actions to improve our fire department and fire services. And now it creates a complexity because of the direction we've set, not that we can't alter, and I would alter in a heartbeat anything that will improve the total overall service to this city. And again, whether it's provided by the county and they have an excellent fire services, whether it was provided by volunteer and a staff combination, whatever provides the best is what we should be doing. Okay? Anyone else?
Yeah. Well, as the newest person here, I've been struggling mightily to get up to speed on all of this, and I thought I understood everything before I got here and have found that I don't really understand all of it, so I'm trying to get up to speed. And I was concerned, like Mr. Cummings, with locking in, but if we're not locking into this memorandum and we're still agreeing, still just negotiating, then I am all in favor of that because more information is better than less by any stretch. As a, I consider Canton my hometown now, even though I wasn't born here, and so my default position's always city first. But if I can be shown that this works best for the city at large, then of course I will support it. And like Mr. Huffman, I have, the responses I have been getting have been very mixed. I have not seen one, a majority in either direction, so that kind of leaves us without the citizens directing what they feel is we should go. So at this point, I am looking forward to hearing what they can come up with because I will support negotiating and finding out what's on the table. But I do reserve judgment until that time.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to speak? Or make sure it was good?
Just one thing I'd like to say in addition is that bigger is not always better. If you look around at the new cities that have been formed, Milton, Brookhaven, Dunwoody, just to name a few, they all came from larger counties, there's a lot more people, a lot more body training, but they all broke away and started their own city. And the purpose of the city is to provide superior services to all of our citizens. And I think we have at least as good, but I really, in my opinion, it may be partial because I live in the city. I think our services are every bit as good as the county's, and maybe a little better. Our response time right now, because the county covers such a large portion, we cover a smaller area, our response time is better most of the time. My wife is a nurse, and I asked her about this, and I said, what really matters? She said, time of response is the main thing. If you have an accident, somebody's there, in three minutes versus eight minutes, it's life or death. It doesn't mean that's going to happen every time. Same thing with a fire. But again, I have been to those fires where county and city both fought those fires together, they worked together great, and they did a super job and saved a lot of lives.
Okay? Anyone else? Mr. Rust?
The only real issue here tonight is do we stop talking or keep talking? And my thought is that, based on the facts that are presented so far, I say we stop talking, I think we're wasting time. I think there are some, I went to that parking meeting the other night, and I think we have some very, very important things to settle, and if we just keep talking and the progress is going to get to nowhere, what's the point? I don't know how you can change the facts. The facts as have been presented so far will not support me supporting this motion.
Yeah? Anyone else?
Yeah? Oh, Mr. Grant. Again, just to make it clear, the motion is, is to keep talking for another month until our January twenty-second meeting to develop agreement that we vote yes or no points.
Okay. Let me take just a minute, and I may know, never hidden how I feel about this issue. I think it's very, very clear to me, that's an advantage to both the city and the county, and this is not consolidation, that word thrown out, it is not consolidation, it is a cooperative effort between the city and the county. You know, so many cities and counties don't get along at all. I mean, I'm suspicious of them, they're going to do something to hurt us. Well, I've been in somewhat of a unique position in my career here. I've been with the county, and I've been with the city. And I can tell you, our county is really not going to do things that are harmful to the city, in my opinion. And we're residents of the county, we're part of it. And so, you know, when, if they do something that's unclear or to our disadvantage, certainly, you know, we get to vote for those people or against those people, they don't get to vote for us and incorporate it. But the bottom line is, this is a, this is a new issue, it's not consolidation. Any way you look at it, there's savings. And there's, in fact, personnel is, when you estimate or budget for personnel in the fires, around fifty thousand a person times nine people, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? Now, we have two stations currently. Those two stations are, the budgeted cost of those is just under two million dollars, okay? We've been told time and time and time again that the operation of a new station would cost around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus or minus. If they can do it cheaper than they could the ones we have now, because the ones we have now are on the average nine hundred and something thousand dollars each. But there'd be less maintenance perhaps, and maybe some other things, I'm not sure exactly what it would be, maybe the insurance would be less, I don't know. But as you, you know, we've also been told that we need additional firemen for existing stations. We don't have enough. This would be an opportunity to take the savings that we would have from the county paying its seven hundred and fifty thousand to operate that, to add this ladder company and manpower to the city, to the city station, one of the two city stations. I'm not an expert in how these things operate, don't claim to be, and don't expect to be. But I can tell you, as we go down, if we can get that manpower, the savings that we have from the operation by the county there would, in my opinion, allow us not only to get some additional manpower, but allow us to speed up or possibly expedite the, our effort at the East Station over near Canton Marketplace. When we start hiring people at Canton Marketplace Station or any future station, we're going to be saving, we're going to be paying seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than we would be if the city operated, if the city operated this station, it's going to cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars more when we going out there, we've got to look back, we're still going to be doing it. One of the fallacies of this two-mile plan, so to speak, is first of all, I don't think the council has really had a lot of involvement in that or really even any kind of approval process, but it assumes no growth in the city. It's two miles when you've set the stations out of here, what happens when you annex another Great Sky or Laurel Canyon or Prominent Point? Suddenly that two miles becomes longer, extends out. So I think there's some things that need to be looked at there, and I certainly appreciate the staff looking and working with the plan for that, and I think it's good. I personally would have a difficult time closing the Canton Downtown Station because I think that it simply doesn't make sense to me, an area in which you probably are more likely to have a serious dangerous fire than almost anywhere in the city. Because you've got all these old buildings, they're all built, some of them have common walls, and I was here in nineteen fifty-four, I guess it was, when the Cantex exploded where Canton, where the building one fifty-one is, and fire went all the way down to the theater. They called fire departments everywhere, well, we're not going into that, but another little bit of history, I guess, but, anyway, I think it's, I think it's a win-win for both the city and the county. I think it not only saves us some money and the county some money, but, you know, it demonstrates that we're willing to work with the county in a cooperative effort in order to save taxpayer dollars for both county residents and city residents. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion, and this motion is, once again, it is not a final decision about what's, what's going to happen here. It leads the way to develop an intergovernmental agreement, the devils in the details. This intergovernmental agreement will have the details of how it is to operate and what the, you know, costs and so forth are. But the, and that's what we need to know. I mean, everyone said we didn't have enough numbers, didn't have enough information, all this. Well, this will map it out, outline it, how that whole thing would operate, and it's then give the council the opportunity to come back and vote for or against it. You know, if some of the details, if I don't like some of the details, I probably couldn't support it either. But I think that, I think it's a good thing, I think it's the right thing to do for the city right now. So we can move on to vote, I guess. Okay? All right. I suspect we probably ought to do a roll call vote. Mr. Grant, as the chairman, Mr. Grant, your vote?
Yes.
We had a motion, right? We had, and you seconded it, right? Okay. Mr. Grant, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rust?
No.
Okay.
No.
McGrew?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm extremely honored to get the vote yes on that motion. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda. Okay. This is action on acceptance of Great Sky Streets, is that where we have to proceed to maintenance? Ms. McGrew?
The council voted to acknowledge that the streets in Gary Sky that were in question, specifically Woody Mountain Trail, as not private. We did not go so far as to accept them under our maintenance. So it is my wish to make a motion that we accept the following Great Sky Streets into our maintenance. I'll read these quickly, and I wanted to read them for the record so there'd be no doubts, rather than just say, see the minutes. Over McCran, Pod Three A, Stargaze Ridge, lots thirty-four to forty-six, lots ninety to one oh seven, Morning Breeze Lane, Woody Mountain Trail. Thundering Hills, Thundering Hills Ridge, Evening Rain Crest, Blue Mountain Rise, White Cloud Run, Afterglow Summit, lots twenty through twenty-seven, lots seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, lot one thirteen, and lot one twelve. Southern Lights, Pod Four, Phase One, Pine Sandy Bank Drive, River Birch Court, Tubelo Trail, Fountain Oaks Way, lots four through seven, lot sixteen, lot seventy-three through seventy-seven, Hartbrook Way, lots fifty-three through sixty-six, and lots one twenty-one through one thirty-one. Morning Miss, Pod Six A, Green Bar Way, lots one through three, and lots thirty-eight through fifty-six, Mount Laurel Walk, and Great Sky Parkway, remaining portion of the street that is not accepted.
Okay. Do we have mostly last second? Okay. Mr. Grant?
Sure.
There's only one correction I might point out to Ms. McGrew, you said in Stargaze Ridge, lots ninety through one oh seven. Lots ninety through ninety-six are in Pod Three B, an undeveloped.
I gave you the new list, it's been changed.
Oh, it's been changed.
That's the thing I handed you before the meeting. What we did was we went, the first list was operating on an incorrect boundary between Pods Three A and Three B, so we went back to the recorded prior.
Okay, I'm sorry, I.
That developed today after conversations with the other.
What you read was correct.
That's correct. According to what's been.
The most recent list is what she read.
Okay, okay.
This list will be in the minutes and also available to the public at any time.
Yes.
Because I read that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those who voted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who no, all members noted the motion. All right. A discussion of the soft opening for Edelhoff River Park, Mr. Huffman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We discussed this at our last meeting. I was asking that we consider opening the park to let the kids play on that fantastic playground, as well as allow walkers and if kids want to go out and not have organized practices or games in team sports out on the field. So I got a letter, I think I sent it to you on email, and you've got it in a hard copy there as well, a letter from Georgia Development Partners. In the second paragraph, it's, addresses that issue, I think Mr. Grant brought that up last meeting, that this letter is to serve as our official notification of the opening of the park at your discretion and our recommendation to limit activities within the oval by restricting organized sports teams' activities until late spring of 2015. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we have a soft opening, communicated with the fire and police to just let them know that the gates will, I guess we can set the times, but maybe it go along with the place where we put the boats in up to the reservoir or something along that time scale. I'm open for any suggestions there as far as times. It's kind of funny, if we, if we close it, it does, why do we have the lights, huh? You know? That's another, for another discussion. So I'd just like to go ahead and work out a soft opening, and we can work out the times if anybody has any suggestions.
Pardon? Please, sir. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let me ask one question, though, Huffman. In this letter, it says Cherokee County has assumed full and formal responsibility for insurance utilities and routine maintenance. Should that be the city of Canton?
It is the city of Canton, I think they passed, when it passed, it went to Cherokee County, then Cherokee County to us. Because it's Cherokee County, they had the bond money. But it, yes, it is, and I checked with Ms. Stanton as well as Mr. Henson coming up, that the insurance has been notified.
Ms. Stanton? Yes, just one point, to make sure that we clarify, soft opening, a soft opening is passive park for a period of time with exception of the playground, is that your intent? Doesn't that mean that you don't want to have ribbon cutting just yet, right?
That's right, I thought it'd be nice to green it up. We're going to plant twenty-two more trees, we found some trees that had some scar zones, so we'll get twenty-two more trees.
But I don't think you want any activity on the grass or anything.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't want team sports.
Okay.
If it's team sports where they got practice and games and they put up goals, see, if we don't put up goals out there, what are they going to use for a goal? You know, the bear spots come where the goals are.
Road markers is, I've seen used pretty often.
That's the reason for that, not putting up the goals.
So are you going to work with the city staff and work that out and just let us know what the hours and so forth are?
I'll work with the city manager, what he thinks the best hours would be with the police and so forth.
Okay. I'm sorry, Fair.
I was going to ask, have you looked, are you going to look at putting some kind of temporary sign saying, you know, no team sports?
Yes, and we will do that.
Good point.
Yeah.
I will also say that they had the gates open last Saturday, they were out there staining, and I took my seven-year-old down to the playground, and he said, wow, Dad, that neat. He thought that was great because they do have some really good playground equipment and sun that I haven't seen in this part of the county.
That playground's gotten rave reviews, and we got, we got to figure out a way to start now the area right next to the playground where you can have birthday parties. now, uh, the area right next to the playground where you can have birthday parties and things like that. The county rents that, rents those things in, in the county parks. We can start, we'll start looking at that, start bringing in a little, a little revenue to help defray some of the costs. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no?
All with a vote.
Uh, so I think we're over to, yeah, discussion of water deposit policy. I, I just actually wanted to mention that again to keep it alive for a little while and ask that it be placed on the agenda for our January work session and, and hope that each of you will give some strong thought to that possibility. Because I, once again, I, I feel like, you know, we, we have a lot of money sitting there that, you know, belongs to some of our homeowners and water customers, many of which, most of which, quite honestly, I assume are, are very good paying customers. And as it is now, you know, if someone moves into the city, they pay the $160, $100, whatever it is on the deposit, well, unless they move out of the city, they never get that back. Never. I mean, and, and we hold it as a liability, even though they may have been a really good paying customer. So, so my, my thoughts are, whatever detail could be worked out is that property owners in whose name the meter is in, with a, maybe a two-year or whatever good payment history, we should refund that money to them. So, but anyway, Mr. Huffman?
No, I'm all for that. I just one question that maybe had our workstation, Mr. Cummings, if Mr. Ingram could put together. I'm far from being an accountant, but with that sizable amount of money in the coffers of the city, is that set aside to where on our, when we have to go get a loan? Is that money counted as the city's or is that set aside?
It's a liability.
It's a liability. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Russ, I'm, I'm very much in favor of my owner wanting to give it back. Why don't we just give him a credit towards their water bill? I mean, you just...
Well, I, you know, somehow, I wouldn't care how it was done. If they wanted to do it that way, that, that would be fine to me.
Yeah, I mean, because that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then, and then too, again, we talked about this too, when someone has lived here, got a great payment, comes back, you got to give them a little credit for that too. And that we do, may, may not actually...
Yeah.
Somebody's got a credit history with us.
Sure.
Paying, and they come back and live in Canton again, don't welcome them back by making, making another deposit, you know?
Right.
The ideal way would, you know, cost-effective way would be to credit against the bill.
Sure.
You know, rather than sending out a separate refund.
I don't think it's fair to keep it like...
I think we just have to give them a good notice that that's what was being done, you know, on the bill and so forth. It'd be good.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, I'd just like to make sure that that is on the January 8th work session. Under view, is there discussion and action on release of lien, a 1987 loan, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, so I can turn that over to Mr. Dyer because it's all legal.
It, it, you had in your packet, the, the 1987 property owner, signed a deed to secure debt to the city. They're now asking that we release that lien. The city has no records of why we have a loan and no record of payments, and we had some other, we did come up before in a different program, this is actually an even older one. The, by law, it, it becomes ineffective in 2017 anyway. So, unless we're going to put the money, we got to release it. Not your option.
Yeah, it sounds to me like something that, you know, we didn't, the city didn't apparently keep good records on that loan program in which if, if someone did certain home repairs, they got X amount of dollar, 10,000 or up to 10,000, I don't know what it was.
Yeah, this was, and there were two different programs apparently, because some of them were in the nineties, this was 1987.
Okay. And it also said in that, I believe, that if they lived there for 10 years, that loan was forgiven?
That was in the 1990s program, so I don't know if it was true here as well, but that was the case on the other situation we had last year.
Okay. All right. So, we, apparently we don't have a record whether they ever made a payment or not.
Don't even know if they paid it off, right? Never have released it.
Okay. Well, it's, it's probably a mess for us, but we, we probably need to move, move ahead and do release that lien. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? All members except for Mr. Russ. Mr. Russ had to leave, so it'll be 5-0 on that one then. Okay. Item B under new business, discussion and action on 9/11 public safety memorandum of understanding. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, uh, this is a 36-month agreement, and I put it on the communications. It was sent to me from the county manager, Jerry Cooper. I don't have authority to sign it, so I've included in your packet. It's a standard 9/11 or 911 communications agreement, and I recommend that the council approve it so that the mayor can sign it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? It's just operations basically of our relationship and the operation of the 911 communication center.
And it's my understanding that the reason it's being done quickly here is to satisfy some auditing requirements the county is undergoing.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we have a motion on this?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve? We have a second. Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? All members, except for Mr. Russ, voting for motion. Item C, discussion and possible action on Northside Cherokee Hospital request to work after hours. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, there's a standard letter in your packet. Just, uh, our ordinance requires that they request it and it be approved by council to allow construction after normal business hours, and we're recommending approval of that.
Okay.
What motion?
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or question? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those no? 5-0. Uh, city manager, report, you have anything else?
Nothing in addition.
Oh, okay. Uh, I would like to mention, of course, got the, the date on this, bring one for the chipper this month. It is January the 3rd at 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Bowlin Park. So, if you want to bring your Christmas tree or whatever there for, to make mulch out of, and I hope you, I hope you will do that. They'll be available there. Uh, I want to once again mention that our meeting schedule for January, January 1st is the first Thursday, but we will not be here on that day, so we are going to move the, the meeting to January the 8th, and January the 22nd will be the second meeting. So, the 8th and the, so 2nd and the 4th Thursday in January this time. Also, um, uh, the council, you have, you have, I believe, a copy of these, a City of Canton committee slate. You can look through that, and you can see whose terms are ending or up for reappointment or replacement or whatever. And, you know, I would welcome any, any suggestions for nominations for any of those slots that you might like to make. And then I will try to make those nominations at, in the January 8th meeting and to be voted on on the 22nd. Does everyone understand what I was saying there about those? Okay. I mean, you can look at where the term ends, one in December of 14, or those which are annual appointments. You can see both of those there. Okay. Also, another thing, I'd like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and particularly be, be safe during the holidays. This is our last meeting of 2014. I have had, I think, 168 meetings, regular council meetings, and in seven years. So, got a few more to go here, sure, so we'll see how that goes. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me say that it is, my understanding, we will be coming back out for a vote on this particular issue. And I don't think it'll take long. Okay? Thank you.[1206.83]